Yes.
We all hear you.
Great, thank you. Paige, are you there as well?
I am here.
Welcome. I think we're ready to get started.
Yeah.
Everybody's here?
Yeah.
Somebody down there is not muted.
Let's see. Oh, wait a minute, what happened? Okay.
That one. Yeah. Alright, so welcome to the Summers zoning commission. Tonight, this is a special meeting on Monday, May 18th, 2020. This is a teleconference on Zoom. Um, but the, the meeting notice was posted on the town website with information how to access the Zoom. We're gonna go around and introduce ourselves. I'm Jill Conklin, Chair of the Summers Zoning Commission.
I'm Carl Walton, I'm the Vice Chair.
I'm Dan Farrow.
Paige Rassett.
And Lucas Cherry.
Jennifer Roy. Jill, Jennifer Roy for the record, I'd like you to, can you remind or, I'll remind the commission members that when you speak, um, state your name first, then speak.
Yes.
Every time.
Yes, every time Jill Conklin's speaking, every time a commission member speaks, they must state their name, or even the public for that matter.
Right.
Um, this is our first public hearing via Zoom, so bear with us, um, I, is there, I think there's an option to raise your hand and, and then Jennifer could probably unmute you, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I have the, um...
Yeah, Lucas is raising his hand right there.
You can also, yes, raise your hand, you find the link, and Jennifer would unmute you to speak, so. Our agenda tonight is a public hearing for, uh, the application number 20-004. This is Mark and Karen Murdock, 27 Golf Road, Summers, Connecticut. This is a proposed text amendment to the Summers zoning regulations, section 214-4, the definition in section 214-44, prohibited uses, and 214-87 alcoholic beverages, and 214-98 scheduled permitted uses to allow a farm, wine, slash brewery as a permitted use in all zones. So with that, we're gonna, you know, the public hearing is open as of, you know, 6:34, and, um, interesting people, parties can speak. On the applicant, either...
I guess we can, uh, this is Mark Murdock, I don't know if you can hear me?
We can.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll start, um, so, I guess we wanna thank you for taking up the discussion, for allowing farm wineries and breweries to exist here in Summers. Um, as you are aware, it's, uh, this is not the first meeting we've held on this topic and, um, in which we've addressed this, and in fact, we've been talking about this for over a year. Uh, at previous zoning meetings, uh, held in January and February, I believe you had on record that, uh, a large number of Summers residents have expressed support for the concept, and, um, and you have, I'm sure you have their names in record on this.
Ah.
Um, well, we have prefer, we would have preferred to await, uh, all the hard work you guys did putting together the new zoning regulations. Um, we all know that it's, uh, not, not gonna happen in the near future, so we decided to submit this proposal, um, to allow our farm wineries and breweries, so. Um, our proposal was admittedly very simply worded, uh, we wanted to keep it simple, but uh, we understand your need for, uh, greater detail in the regulations, and, um, have reviewed your text amendment changes, and, uh, we fully agreed to them, we find them acceptable, we drafted them, so, um, thank you for that. Um, and as we previously stated in previous meetings, farm wineries are highly popular and provide for a perfect way in use and development without increasing the burden for the town services. Um, it supports, uh, the primary tenants of the Summers Plan on Conservation and Development, which was established in 2015, in keeping with that, and, um, and I think we know it's, it's a good use of the land, so especially in these tough times, I think it's a good opportunity for supporting the business here in town and farms and, uh, without creating an undue burden, uh, for our, for our services, so, um, with that, uh, we recommend that you, you know, consider approving the draft of the text amendment proposal that you dreamed you'd drafted. Karen, anything else to add to that?
No, I, I think we've already expressed, you know, what, what it is that we're asking the commission to approve, and, um, I guess let's just keep, keep the meeting moving. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Jill Conklin, so at, at this time, we just heard from the applicant, we're going to, um, open this up to the public, so at this time, we would take, uh...
Jill?
Yeah?
Uh, this is Carl Walton. Um, based on the conversations earlier, um, I understand that the Murdochs are happy with the text amendment as was sent out, but, um, I don't know that all of the zoning commission members are happy with it worded exactly that way. So it's gonna change before it's adopted in some manner, and we will end up having further discussion for sure.
Correct.
But I think it's appropriate that we take comment from the public, so we get a feeling for if the public is showing an interest in adopting this regulation more so than any particular location.
Right, this, Jill Conklin, again, this, this, um, public hearing is, is not for a particular piece of property, or it doesn't have, um, it, it's not for a particular area of town, it's basically a text amendment to our zoning regulations that would allow such use in town, so we are only gonna take, um, public comments as to the text amendment, um, which, you know, could most possi, and most possibly will change. This, this public hearing will stay open, it won't close tonight, so with that said, I am gonna open it to the public to, so we can get some feedback, and, um, we'll start with those in favor of the text amendment, or the idea of, um, wine, farm wineries and breweries in town.
Jennifer Roy for the record, Jill, I just wanted to mention that some people might be on their telephone, in which case they're not going to be able to raise their hand.
Yeah.
Um, and so it also might be difficult, I don't, it's not necessary to take people who are in favor first and then opposed second, it might be difficult to know who's, if, if, you know, they're not able to raise their hand and say, "I wanna talk now" in favor, so...
Excuse me, Jen?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe using the keypad, they can raise their hand and...
They might not know that, though.
What?
If they know how to do that, I, I've been on Zoom calls and I, I don't know how to do that, just, um, so how would you like to do it, Jill?
Um, I still think people can hear me, so if they wanna speak in favor of the applicant, they can chime in.
Well, they're, everyone is muted until I unmute them.
No, but they can't talk, but they're hearing me.
Yeah, they can hear us.
Is everybody hearing me?
I understand.
Does everybody hear me?
Jill, they can't chime in if they're muted.
Right.
Is what I'm saying.
Carl Walton again for the record.
Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we just, you, we can all see the phone numbers that are there, why don't we call on them one by one and ask them if they wanna comment?
Right, that's a good idea.
Well, we have two people with their faces here, we have, um, George Schober and we have Sean Clark. Would either of you like to speak on this applicant, application?
Yes.
Oh, well...
We can't both go at the same time.
Yeah, I unmuted George, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll, I'll wait, I, I will defer.
Okay. Sean, Clark?
Hi, good, good evening, I'm actually working with the Murdochs on this proposal, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, um...
One minute, Sean, um, Jill Conklin again speaking, Sean, you just have to state your name and address for the record.
Oh, sure, it's Attorney Sean Clark, I'm at 78 Beaver Road in Weathersfield, Connecticut, and I've been working with the Murdochs on the language, um, that was proposed for the proposed tax amendment. Um, I'm not sure that the Murdochs were aware, certainly I wasn't aware, at least as recent as our conversations today, that there would be changes to the tax amendment language, um, perhaps by consideration by the commission, and certainly the, the import of the, the, any potential changes, um, we would like to at least have the opportunity to comment on, if not, uh, through another public hearing, but at least in writing to see what the changes are that the commission discussed as an outcome of this particular meeting. Um, but just to set the stage, I mean, under, understanding that this is not a, a special use permit application, it's not an application for a particular, uh, piece of property, it's really for the benefit of all of Summers, it's for the benefit of all of Summers property. Um, and Summers, Summers zoning is largely classified as residential in two different classifications of residential, as you all know, but agricultural uses in Summers are certainly consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, the Murdochs certainly believe that, um, this tax amendment's consistent with that, and, uh, any proposed, um, project thereafter would be consistent with that. Um, but farm wineries in general are typically considered to be accessory uses to agricultural uses, so they're really no different than a farm stand, they may have different purposes, but they're no different than other uses that are related, attendant to certain agricultural uses, and as, as you may appreciate from even the farms and other operations in the town of Summers, um, the only way that farmers really can survive today are to be diversified. Um, so certainly I think you should keep that in mind with respect to what's, um, what's being proposed here today. Um, the, the other, uh, things that I think the Murdochs were clear on was that, you know, they've kind of worked with the commission, worked with the staff and the people of Summers all along, uh, with the notion that they were trying to, to have this language or similar language incorporated in the proposed zoning change, uh, that, um, seemed to be somewhat on hold or, um, uh, delayed at this point in time, and certainly the intent, um, to go forward with this is that they've been working long and hard, and this, this commission's heard, uh, in January, uh, pretty favorably in support of the concept of this, which I think is important for the purposes of the tax amendment, so obviously I'll be interested to hear, uh, the comments from the public tonight, but to the extent that there are changes to the tax amendment, um, the Murdochs have commented on those, I've commented on those tax amendment changes, uh, to the, to the commission, going back to the original proposed zoning regulations, and we've made some comments with respect to the proposed, uh, tax amendment changes here, uh, so if there's anything that's of any great significance, certainly we would wanna have the opportunity to see that and then, um, and respond appropriately whether through writing or through another public hearing. I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, are you ready?
George Schober, 98 Rocky Dundee Road, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you, uh, good evening, uh, I wanted to, uh, address a number of, of points and issues that I and, uh, I know others have with the, uh, tax amendment, and first, uh, I wanna say I'm opposed to the idea of wineries, breweries, and distilleries as it is, uh, proposed now in the town of Summers, and I know that the, uh, commission wants to look at this as a, uh, as a, uh, a text amendment that benefits, uh, as Attorney Clark says, the entire town of Summers, but there's a lot of us that feel it's a detriment to the entire town of Summers, and this amendment is being proposed right now for one specific site, the Murdochs are looking to propose this for a winery on Mountain Road.
Okay, what?
And I understand that this is not about one specific site, but it really is, because if the Murdochs didn't have a winery proposed where they're already doing work for Mountain Road, we wouldn't be here tonight, so you can say what you wish, but it's all about Mountain Road, Worthington Pond Farm, that's what it's about.
No, George, that's not what it's about.
Excuse, excuse me, George, this, this actually isn't about Mountain Road, because this, the idea of a winery, brewery came up a couple of years ago, or just about a couple of years ago, when we started the work on our regulations, we had, we had sat with Glenn Chalder and we talked at length about what new things we wanted to incorporate into our zoning regs that we didn't currently have, and wineries and, you know, farm to table, that type of thing came up, but we weren't able to adopt our regulations, so that's why somebody's coming forward, this, there's already verbiage in our, in our text for our regulations, which, which isn't a final draft as well, but we were working towards a final draft and we got sidetracked, we had to put it on hold, so this, this evening is about a text amendment, and the text amendment is broad and it's gonna cover any winery or brewery that is or isn't, um, approved in the town, the text amendment, it's not about Mountain Road at all, so just keep that in mind, this is not about Mountain Road, that would be a whole nother applicant, that would be a whole nother public hearing.
I, I understand that there will be another public hearing, and the issue that I have is, is that, or an issue that I have, is that a special use permit will obviously be required of some sort for any specific winery, brewery, or distillery, the problem is that it's very difficult to, uh, deny a, a winery, brewery, or distillery, or any other type of activity that's allowed by a special use permit anywhere in town, the burden to deny it, you can shake your head all you want, but legally, it's extremely difficult to deny and have it stand up in court, and so once this, uh, text amendment or anything similar to this is put into place, there will be a winery on Mountain Road, and this is step one, and I get that, you have to do it in two steps, but this is step one. Now, the town, in that zoning rewrite, and I've submitted, uh, into the record today, uh, a contract from Glenn Chalder of Plan of Metrics with the town of Summers, that should be in your record, and along with that, there's another packet, uh, and that's for the rewrite of the zoning regulations, there's another packet that I submitted of all of Mr. Chalder's invoices and all of the payments, and that shows that the town of Summers, as of the last invoice that I received, uh, via FOI, has spent almost $45,000, $45,000 in drafting the new regulations, and my first question is, uh, and certainly as part of those new regulations, uh, Mr. Chalder was putting in language for breweries, wineries, and distilleries, has he participated in the process since these zoning regs have been pulled off the table, in other words, since the Murdochs have submitted their text amendment, has Mr. Chalder, with his vast knowledge and experience and ability to charge $45,000 to write new zoning regulations that aren't done yet, has he participated in assisting the commission as to what these regulations should say?
Carl Walton for the commission, George, you know full well that he is not participating in this part of it.
I don't know that, Carl, that's why I'm asking.
He has not participated recently, we are not operating under normal circumstances, we would much have preferred to meet face to face to discuss any changes between what was submitted as a tax request by the applicant, what was proposed in our new regulations, and what we will probably arrive at. It's very hard for us to do that because, as you know, we can't meet face to face either.
And that was why, that, that was why, uh, before, the last public hearing was noticed, or as soon as it was noticed, I, I expressed my opposition to holding a public hearing by Zoom, especially when we have an order from the governor that allows for an additional 90 days at any stage in the process, so my suggestion was that the 90 days or some portion of it be used to see if we can't have a normal process, I don't know what the rush is, but it seems to me like when you've retained an expert to write your zoning regulations, and now you're not seeking his advice after spending $45,000 on something that is controversial and something that involves alcohol, I, and something that is new to this town, I don't know why you wouldn't continue to use your expert.
Jill Conklin, I mean, this is a, we, we're not gonna answer these questions, we'll have the discussion at the end, so just, we'll just take your comment.
Right.
So just, George, please state your name every time you speak.
Sure, George Schober, alright, so now, uh, Mr. Murdoch, when he spoke, uh, today, stated that there were a large number of Summers residents who expressed support, well, I didn't look up the dictionary definition of large, but I think that what you need in order to define a term like large is figure out what the overall population is, say 10,000 residents of Summers, and how many people spoke in favor of the, uh, text amendment, which may have been maybe 30, give or take, 40, that percentage would not be considered a large percentage, at least not in the math that I've learned, so I take issue with that, and there are, under that arg, under that argument, there are a large number of people that have concerns about this, and I think about 10 have spoken out, but I know there are others, and hopefully they will chime in. Uh, I would suggest that if the commission in this town is dead set on allowing, uh, alcoholic establishments in residential areas, that those, uh, areas be limited to properties that are on a state highway, Route 83, Route 190, Route 286, uh, those roads are designed to handle traffic and, um, quite frankly, the sightlines are better, the, uh, speed is higher, the, uh, roads are typically flatter, uh, as opposed to a lot of roads in Summers, uh, Stafford Road, for example, uh, Parker Road, Mountain Road, there's a lot of roads that are windy, that are hilly, that are steep, that are narrow, uh, I think that serving alcohol at establishments in these residential areas, and then having people, many of whom wouldn't be from Summers and wouldn't be familiar with the road, uh, get into their vehicle, oftentimes at night, uh, under cover of darkness, and drive down these roads, I think you're asking for a problem, now, it's good for my business, I do personal injury, I do criminal law, uh, you know, business will be, will, will increase, there's no doubt about it, but I don't think that it makes sense, uh, for the town to do that, and so I would suggest that if the commission is insisted upon these being located in residential zones, that these types of activities occur on a state road. I'm not even sure, you know, my, my druthers would be that if they are going to be allowed, that they be allowed only in commercial or industrial zones. Now, as far as, uh, supporting existing businesses, well, in the Murdochs case, and, and again, they're arguing that this will help support existing businesses, but they're creating a business, it's not an existing business, so that argument is, uh, invalid, it may help support a business from time to time, and it may not, it may just bring in, uh, new businesses that maybe, you know, the town doesn't really want, uh... And again, I would, I'm looking for my notes, bear with me a second. I, I would like to comment later in the hearing, as I had misplaced the page of notes, in addition, I would request that the commission hold the public hearing open tonight, uh, until the next meeting, uh, so that whatever amendments to the amendments are made, uh, we have a chance to review and comment, thank you.
Thank you, Jill Conklin, thank you. Is there, is there anybody else that would like to...
Ken Pryor, 364 Mountain Road. Can you hear me?
You can hear me.
I can, I can hear you. Okay, yeah, um, I'd like to speak in opposition to breweries and wineries in any residential zone, uh, these establishments will negatively impact the tranquility, safety of our neighborhoods, increase traffic, and reduce property values. Um, like you just heard from George, uh, the taxpayers just paid a consultant over $44,000 to provide expert advice on a balanced zoning regulation that would have provided limits and restrictions on wineries, protections for homeowners in established neighborhoods, but these recommendations were thrown out, now we have a developer with interest in one location dictating a regulation with no restrictions that will impact the entire town, the town is under no obligation to rush this forward, there would need to be a well thought out plan for zoning, and May 2nd JI article stated that if approved, the permit would allow activities such as receptions, expositions, music, entertainment, seminars, and meetings. I must remind you that banquet facilities or reception halls and indoor entertainment is exclusively forbidden in residential zones, and for good reason, this was litigated in court in 2006, so in essence, this would allow banquet halls to set up under the facade of a winery in a residential neighborhood. Although I am totally against this change, I hope you will consider the following, limit wineries and, uh, breweries to business industrial zones, or to like, uh, Route 190 or Route 83, uh, main thoroughfares, uh, if you are gonna consider residential zones, mandate stricter regulations, uh, limit the size of drinks to three ounces, uh, limit the total number of drinks to two, no open bottles, uh, discuss allowable activities that are complementary to, uh, residential zones and not harmful, consider surrendering, surrendering pre-existing special use permits as a condition of a, of a winery permit, as you discussed at your May 4th meeting, uh, regarding the Lipton property, I urge you to carefully consider this in the fallout, this is not a simple tax amendment, it is gonna impact the future of Summers, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody who listens to Jill Conklin, is there anybody else that would like to speak in the public hearing? You can unmute yourself and... We'll come back to you after George, once we hear from the rest, thank you.
Carl Walton again for the record, who is 860-324-2953, you look like you wanted to talk.
Michelle Pryor.
Jennifer Roy for the record, could you repeat your name and address for the record, please?
Michelle Pryor, 364 Mountain Road.
Oh, you're Ken's wife.
Right.
Okay, you're allowed to speak though, if you wanna speak.
Uh, yes, I, I just also wanted to, to speak and just say that I, I'm also opposed to the wineries in residential zones, and I, I just want the town to kind of take time to consider all the ramifications, I think sometimes things kind of get rushed through, um, and they don't consider all parties, um, so I just kind of want the town to take a little bit of time and think about all the ramifications and everybody that lives in the town, um, you know, if, if somebody gets killed on Mountain Road, you know, who, who would get sued, you know, within town pairs? You know, would the town payers have to pay for this? Would, you know, the owners of the winery, the establishment, I mean, who particularly would have to pay out on this? So I just kind of urge the town to take a moment, a long moment, and consider all the ramifications before making any kind of decision. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Jill, I would have Carl Walton again, interjecting again. Why don't you just take the next person and ask them if they want to speak there?
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna look at phone number ending in 8890.
That was, that was Ken Pryor.
Oh, okay, so phone number ending in 225. Can you unmute them, Jen? Or they can?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
If you want, just state your email address, please.
This is Greg Altieri. I live on Route 10, which is off Mountain Road, for all you who know that or don't know that.
Can you speak before, Ken, and spell your last name?
Last name is A-L-T-I-E-R-I.
Altieri, okay, thank you.
Name is Greg. You got that?
Yes. And the address again?
55 Route Road.
Thank you.
Okay. So, first of all, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. A little side note, Carl, I hope you remember who I am, because we worked together-
Yes, Greg, I know exactly who you are, Greg.
Good to hear your voice again. I am in favor of the winery, and I don't know if all the emails that were gathered were looked at, at the risk of repeating what I sent to Jennifer in the email, I think that the main points that I thought were very positive is that when you look at new businesses, new ventures going into the town, this is something that's, I think, pretty unique and would add to the charm of the environment. I believe that you can add a Henny Penny, you can add a Subway, not so much uniqueness, not so much charm, it just doesn't, when we moved here 30 years ago, that's what drew us to the area. And then as things evolve, we tend to get the sameness of new businesses, and I understand, you know, tax revenues and all that, that's understandable, but you want to do something that can also bring in tax revenues and can also bring you something that's, again, new and unique and charming. Now, this also, aside from what it would serve for the townsfolk, it would also be a destination point for people who are riding around on a weekend, or they want to stop in the tasting room, they want to survey the vineyards when they're in full bloom or whatever. This is something that, again, would bring people in, because I've seen it work in wineries across the state. I was in the wholesale wine and liquor business for many years, and I've seen people, as they've expanded, and the amount of wineries that have taken place over the years have been definitely beneficial, very beneficial to the towns that they reside in. The big, to me, the big opposition, the big stumbling point here is the idea of it's in a residential area, and given all the safety and, you know, well-founded concerns about safety and health and all that, I think the assumption for the people who are opposed to it, not just the people that have spoken up today, but anybody who would speak up to that, is that there's an assumption that ownership and management would be irresponsible in their duty of dispensing about them. So unless you're, you know, expecting people dancing on tables and, you know, chugging down quarts of wine at a city, that doesn't happen in wineries, because it's a controlled environment, you have tasting rooms, and you have people there who have to be certified to pour responsibly through the TIPS program, you also have to have it monitored, because they're the ones who lose. People don't realize that, that, they think that, well, you're off the hook. There's a huge liability when it comes to serving alcohol, and people who get into that business at whatever level are very aware of it, because they know that their license could be pulled, they can go out of business, they could be fined, they could have lawsuits, they could have a lot of problems, so there's a huge awareness. I've taught TIPS, responsible alcohol serving, for many years, and I know, I can tell you many stories of people who didn't do the right thing and don't, don't have a business anymore, and those who have done the right thing and are very aware of it. So you have to realize that there's a big responsibility and a big awareness on ownership's part, and that trick goes down to the management and the staff. So as far as recklessness and all that, I mean, I can't say 100% guarantee anybody who comes out of that place is going to be 100% safe, but chances are that vast, vast majority will be safe coming out of that. And, and so, traffic, I don't see, again, I don't see hordes of buses, I don't see, this won't be like Fox News, this is going to be something people will trickle into, and people will come and go at a leisurely pace, and the frequency and the volume, I don't envision being tremendous, except for maybe on the weekends, maybe, but again, you're spread out, you don't have a short window as far as your operations of business. So I think the people who look at it that way, again, with well-founded concerns, you have to look at the other side of it, that the Murdochs or whoever else it may be that opens up a place, they have to know that it's their skin in the game, and they're the ones that lose more than anybody, so why would they take a kind of cavalier approach and do it the wrong way? So I think, look, consider that as maybe the biggest counterbalance to your argument. And thank you for your time, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
So, the next phone number ending in 3468.
Oh, I'm here, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes. Eleanor Levine, 9 Mountain Road. Do you hear that?
Yes, Eleanor, thank you.
Okay. I'm calling with the biggest possible opposition to breweries and wineries anywhere in a residential zone in Summers. My roommate was killed in a head-on collision with a drunk driver. So the idea of there being alcohol served to members of the public who may not know these roads freaks me out on a very primal and maternal level. I am a mother. I am very concerned about my son's jogging or biking on roads when there may be alcohol in an increased level in, in drivers nearby. Now, I, I heard the very calm, reasoned discussion from the prior caller, whose name I have forgotten, Mr. Altieri, and I appreciate his interjecting a note of reason, but he himself admitted that accidents happen, there are the exceptions to the rule, and I ask you, why should we take the chance? The zoning board exists to protect the residents of Summers, and I do not feel protected, I do not feel my family and our, our way of life here is being protected at all.
Are you still there, Eleanor?
I'm, I'm here.
Okay, because we're not, we don't really, we're not commenting, we're just taking in, and again, keep in mind, this is a testimony, we're not commenting on each, each person that happens to speak at this public hearing, we're just-
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. All right, then I have nothing else to say, but there's another resident in this house to whom I am not married, I'm passing the phone.
They would just need to state their name and address.
Yeah, my name is Tom Nesbit, at 9 Mountain Road. Zoning commissions are typically created by government to protect the interests of the people in town, and they create zoning districts that will enhance or stabilize the development in those areas so that the development is consistent with what exists. Adding a commercial business to a residential zone creates difficulties in the life expectancy of people who want to live in those neighborhoods who already live in those neighborhoods. You have areas in town where you've had serious development of residential construction over the last 20 years, and to permit an activity that is going to change the complexion of the, of the places that people have chosen to live simply because you want to increase the tax base is not very logical. There are areas that are agricultural already, that those would be consistent with development of a winery or a brewery or a distillery. And furthermore, if, if it's traditional, as I understand things, that agricultural property is generally not taxed as high as residential property. So increasing your tax base by how much? If you're, if you're changing the zoning of a particular area to allow commercial development that is agricultural-based, then you, you have a likelihood of reducing your tax level for that particular property. So what's the gain? I think that you really need to consider that if you're going to be practical servants of the community, that the zoning, as it exists right now, with residential zones, do not need to have commercial businesses, whether they're agricultural-based or not, and I think that you really should consider the fact that you have agricultural areas already that would be more conducive to this kind of a project. But it's clear, because the people in this particular instance have already undergone a lot of construction and are, there's just constant equipment noise, they obviously know that they're going to get a variance for the use that they intend, so I don't even know why you're even bothering to have a hearing to discuss any of this anyway, because they wouldn't have invested all this time and money if they weren't going to get So I'd appreciate it if you would reconsider the purpose of the zoning commission and what it's supposed to do to protect the, the environment that people have chosen to live in, in this town, and not introduce activities and businesses that don't belong in those neighborhoods. And I think I'm finished.
Thank you, Tom. I don't see anybody else on here. I know George wanted to speak again, and Sean's going to speak, who? George, you want to go ahead?
No, let Sean go, I'll defer to Sean. Go first this time. Do you want me to go? Do you want me to go, George? Sure. I, I, I think we're getting-
For the record, yes, for the record, that Sean Clark just-
Sean Clark, yes, from Kenny Bremer's office again. So I, I just wanted to just kind of bring this back a little bit. Summers basically, and these are some of the comments that, you know, this should be located in a business or industrial zone. Again, we're not talking about a specific proposal, we're talking about the permission of a tax amendment that would allow this to occur throughout the town, but in, in the business and industrial zones in Summers, as you look at the zoning map as it currently exists, most of those are located right either, or along Route 1, or in the center of Summers, the four, where the four corners are, and what we really need to kind of go back and focus on is that, the proposal of this tax amendment doesn't talk about all wineries, it doesn't talk about all breweries, it doesn't talk about all bodily distilleries, we're not talking about an Anheuser-Busch type of facility, we're talking about a farm winery. And in a farm winery, I think everyone should be remembered that it's required certain things, and a farm winery, even under the proposed regs, requires that the produce or the grapes that are grown, or the hops that are grown for a brewery, they have to be grown on the property in which that's going to occur. So I just don't think, as a practical matter, any suggestion that these types of activities, farm wineries, can, it's kind of oxymoronic, if you will, it can't occur in Summers in a, in a business or industrial zone, because you can't grow those types of materials in the currently designated zone. So this is talking about a farm winery. It is a farm winery or brewery that's clearly established by state statute that has specific restrictions that come with it to begin with. So we're not talking about a concept in terms of this tax amendment where it would be open at nighttime, or open all night long, or open late hours, and the random service of excessive amounts of alcohol. It's, it's as the gentleman indicated, it's going to be a tasting room for samples of what took place on the farm that could happen. It's like having a cheese shop on a farm that sells cheese, that's a related business to that farm, where they're open for a certain amount of hours where they could sell cheese, while it may not be alcohol, but it's a farm-related type of business, and that's what the Department of Agriculture, the State Liquor Control Commission, and our legislators at the state level have recognized the import of farm wineries. And in fact, there is a farm winery council that the state has established to promote farm wineries. Why? Because it's consistent with many towns' plans of conservation development in terms of keeping an agricultural base. I'm not sure what Mr. Nesbit's point was specifically, but the farms in Summers are not located in the center of town, they're located in the open space areas, which, based on the fact that there's really only two designated areas for either Residential A or Residential A1, most likely in Summers, the farms are going to occur in a defined residential zone because of the way the zoning regulations are currently, and that's why the proposed tax amendment inherently incorporates them. In terms of the numbers that George was talking about, I just did some quick math, but to give the commission a flavor as to what we're talking about, and I know we're probably hampered a little bit with the virtual meeting that we're having tonight, but in, in the initial meeting in January, only 16% of the people opposed the farm winery, and in the second hearing, the public hearing that took place on the zoning regulations, in the 21st of January, only 28% of those opposed it. And some of the opposition to the notion of the tax amendment relating to other particular uses that were going on with respect to this working team property, which again, is really outside the scope of what even those amendments were for. So I think in terms of, of what we're really talking about here, we're talking about a farm winery designation, it's consistent with tastings, it's consistent with control by the Liquor Control Board, some of the control will be available to the town with respect to, you know, limitations that it may be able to put on through the special use permit process, but this is just to permit that to take place, but largely, the activities are going to be already regulated by Liquor Control, the farm winery regulations, and the other regulations that would apply. And I think I'm all set for right now.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
George?
Yes, thank you, Bill. Am I, George Shober, am I unmuted?
You are.
You're, you're unmuted, George. I would only, Carl Walton again, I would only ask that we don't turn this into an exchange between you and Mr. Clark, because that's not gonna, that's not what we're here for. Well, I, I think that I am allowed to address any comments that anyone makes on this application, that is what a public hearing is all about, and so if Mr. Clark makes comments, I'm certainly allowed to address those unless you're telling me I can't. I am not, I am just asking that we focus on what we're here for, which is to get input from the public, which you are part of, on winery, brewery, possible regulations, farm, winery, brewery, possible regulations for the town of Summers. I, this is George Shober, and I think it's very important that any regulation specifically prohibit any other type of commercial activity on or adjacent to, well, I guess it couldn't really be adjacent to, but on the property, so I'm very concerned about a winery being opened anywhere in town in a residential zone that would allow for other activities such as wedding receptions, and I've submitted into the record an article from Hail Channel Films that was sent in this afternoon where the-
this afternoon, where the author of that article, guy named, last name of Hale, H-A-L-E, was hosting a reception that had to do with wedding venues. And he was in the article, and I'm going to read from it, it's one sentence. "I was happy to meet some new people last night, including Karen and Mark Murdock. They're opening Worthington Vineyard and Winery in Summers, Connecticut, where they also hope to host weddings and other events." So, this isn't a farm winery. This is a wedding and other event venue, and I think that any regulations need to prohibit any of that. If the Murdochs or anyone else wants to open a farm winery, I think that's one thing, where someone comes and there's reasonable regulations for them to go to a tasting room and try a glass of wine and sit outside and look at the sunset, that's all well and good. But I think it's another thing to have, as Mr. Altieri said, people dancing on a table, he mentioned, and I'm talking about at a wedding reception where people do drink too much. And being able to host commercial events like that in the middle of a residential neighborhood simply because they have a farm winery. So, I think it's imperative that the commission not allow that to happen, because that's what creates the nuisances. That's what creates the excessive drinking. So, I wanted to mention that. The other issue that I have is that there has been a lot of work done on A site for A winery. And the work's been done without a permit. And I submitted into the record a chain of emails between me, Jennifer Roy, and Jeff Board regarding the failure to obtain a driveway permit on a curb cut on a brand-new mountain road repave, to drive heavy equipment in and out to do this work. And it's relevant, because the person who's applying for this text amendment, who's hoping to get an alcohol permit at some point in the future, can't even follow simple regulations like obtaining a driveway permit. I've also submitted into the record an agreement that this particular individual entered into with the State Election Enforcement Commission because he couldn't follow the election laws. These amendments that are proposed need to be reviewed by competent experts, along with the zoning commission, to ensure that the residents of the town of Summers are protected. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Is there anybody else that has spoken would like to...
Yes, Ken Pryor, 364 Mountain Road.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I just want to add a comment regarding Mr. Clark's comments about industrial business zones. I just want to point out D's Winery and Powder Hollow Brewery, right across the town line in Enfield, they're doing just fine. It's a winery in an old industrial building. These businesses do fine in industrial zones. And also, when we're talking about farmland and residential areas, something else the commission could consider is, say, a buffer zone or prohibiting a winery from opening up lots, say, houses or homes. There's plenty of open space in different parts of Summers. There is clearly a farm, but knowing somebody that's actually in the wine business, a lot of these places, they throw a couple of grapevines up and they actually import the juice to make the wine. So, to say that this is purely agricultural is kind of like smoke and mirrors sometimes when they're importing all the juice. I mean, obviously, D's Winery is not growing grapes in Enfield in a parking lot. They're importing the juice, they're bottling it and putting their name on it. So, you know, it's not 100% true what's being stated here. That's all I have.
Go ahead, Mark.
Mark Murdock, just one comment I'm going to clarify. Yes, the one property that we are working with is, as we've been planting grapes. That's what we've been doing. It's a little bit of cleanup on the front-end property to make it look good. And I hope and I feel that it's improved the look of the land, the look of the aesthetics. And again, it's, I mean, just like planting, anybody having it in their backyard, that's all we've really been doing, is planting grapes. So, as far as any driveway, there is no driveway. That's all grass. So, and we did, just to respond to Jen's, Jen Roy's request, we did put a permit in, but again, we have no plans to put in a driveway as was implied by Mr. Schobert. So, thank you.
George?
George Schobert. First, there was a driveway there. It was gravelled in. It was completely different. I'm not implying anything. Either that or my eyes are lying. But that driveway was there. I know that Jen, and I presume that Jen and Jeff went up to see it and insisted, I think, that a driveway permit be piloted. Now, it is covered with topsoil as of this weekend, so the driveway does not exist right now, although the entrance, you can still see where it was. The other thing is, is I would hardly call what was done to that 2.5 acre lot, a little bit of cleanup in the front of the property. The lot was clear-cut, stumped, all the topsoil was stripped and cleaned. It was respread, regraded. A little bit of cleanup is saying that the Titanic hit a little iceberg. Thank you.
This is Chairwoman. This is Lucas Jerry.
One minute, Lucas. I really, we really need, this is Jill Conklin. I really need to keep all our comments about the text amendment, not about a specific location in town. If you have any complaints about a location and work that's being done, you can certainly call Jen. But this is not to discuss any particular property. This is a text amendment for a farm, winery, brewery. That's it. And we are keeping this public hearing open, so...
Chairwoman, that's exactly what I was going to...
Go ahead, Lucas.
Try to stay focused on the text amendment under consideration, but as you said, various other topics.
Thank you. George? Jen, can you end?
George Schobert. Wanted to point out that I think that any time there's an application to the zoning commission, that it's relevant who's making the application and what's being said and what's truthful and what's not. And so, I can appreciate that you want to try to focus on the text amendment, but there's a bigger picture here, and it is relevant. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak regarding the application at hand? Dan?
No.
Jill, Jennifer Roy for the record. So, after, since we're going to be keeping this open, I have been gathering emails from residents and I have George's exhibits. There's six of them. I did get them today. So, tomorrow I will be scanning all of these and I will email the commission members so that you can read each comment, each email. Where normally, you know, people can come talk and we would say if they're in favor or opposition, I think it's imperative that you read each email. So, I will scan them all and give them to you, and as well as post everything to our website under the zoning commission tab.
Do you have a, this is Jill Conklin. Jennifer, do you have a list right there in front of you of the people that have responded either for or against that we...
I didn't make a list. I've been gathering them all afternoon and printing them as they came in. I can, you know, count them real...
Could you mention the name and the address and whether they're in favor or opposed, possibly?
Yes, I will do that. Jennifer Roy for the record again. So, we have Michael Chirpak, 19, Pheasant Run. He's in support of the text. Kelly Giacello, 118 Stafford Road, in support. Angela Kohler, 43 Sunshine Farms Drive, in support. I have a letter from Vicki Clark for the Economic Development Commission. She submitted to the commission, which I shared with the commission today, and I will put this on the website on the zoning tab, that the Economic Development Commission supports growth in Summers.
I think we should just post it if we're not reading them all. I mean...
No, I will. I'm just saying it's in support of...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Jasper Sandberg, 12 Mountain Road, in support. Heidi McCarthy, in support. Couple of people I was waiting for responses back for their address to verify. Caroline Skronik, 36th Griss Mill Terrace, in support. Julie Hinckley, 62, Collins Road, in support. Tony Cassiano, Wynwood Circle, in support. Bob Garlick, 52, Juniper Hill Drive, in support. Sandra Brusso, 11 Mallard Circle, in support. Julie Higgins, 46, Bradley Road, in support. Mackenzie Anderson, 14, Sunshine Farms Drive, in support. Shanika Brown, I'm waiting for her address, opposed. Mike Hall, he's a renter in Summers and plans to buy a house here soon. He's concerned about the regulation. I have another email from Jasper Sandberg, 12 Mountain Road, concerned about the language of the text. So, he's in favor, but he's concerned about the language. Sean Pryor, 364 Mountain Road, opposed. B.J. Smith, Stafford Road, opposed. Andy Proventur, 69 Main Street, opposed. And Brad Gawron, G-A-W-R-O-N, Hawes Road, opposed. Kenneth Quello, 605 Stafford Road, opposed. Marjorie Griswold, 208 Battle Street, opposed.
Is there anybody else at this point that wants to speak before we...
Carl Walton. Just like to interject my thoughts on the matter. We recognize that what we're probably going to end up with is between what was proposed by Glenn Chalder when we were rewriting our regulations and what was proposed as potential language for a text amendment. To explain how we didn't really arrive at this meeting with it, I can only point to the fact that we can't have face-to-face meetings. We can't really easily have open exchanges between the members of the commission. And that's why we presented what we had. We saw it when you saw it. So, it's going to evolve, and we're intending to keep it open. We're intending to share it with everybody. We're intending to let everybody input. And I guess that's really all I got on that.
Thank you.
Jill, Jennifer Roy for the record. I think it might be pertinent for me to clarify the recent, the proposed text for the amendment, that it came from staff. It came from Jeff Board and myself, because when we first received the applications and the Murdochs didn't have, you know, language for it, the commission expressed the desire to have some sort of language. I did not consult with anyone outside, and no consultants, did not consult with Glenn Chalder. We typically resource, you speak with other towns and see what they have, and that's where it came from. It came from just checking other town regulations, and Jeff Board and I typed up something, just so there's somewhere to start. And I agree with what Carl Walton said, that just in hopes that you would keep what the staff has provided for information and what Glenn Chalder has previously provided to consider in both. But there was not, that came from Jeff and myself, for whatever intents and purposes.
Lucas Jerry here. I just wanted to point out, at least on Ida Hattman, I'm sure other commission members too, I appreciate the work you did put into that, Jennifer, you and Jeff. And I know that's not an easy task, and I, for one, greatly appreciate the effort, the time, and I just wanted to make sure that was duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas.
I'll let Carl Walton, I'll echo what Lucas said. We needed a starting point.
Paige is looking to speak.
Yep, Paige.
So, Paige asked, and so, again echoing the appreciation for the draft, the commission itself has not discussed these regulations at all, not one. We haven't given any input yet, but I think that will happen. You know, Carl said maybe it'll be something between what the staff recommendation and what the Murdochs proposed. I think there's probably more to discuss than even what the staff put in, and I, for one, would like to get there too.
Thank you, Paige. Yeah, and ending tonight, I mean, ending this, not ending the public hearing, but this will be continued. We did have input from Glenn Chalder. It was in our last draft, but that was, it was all in red. It was something new. We never really had time to discuss it. We had other items coming up and we got tabled. And in the meantime, the Murdochs did give us a text amendment that was like, I don't know, maybe a line or two. It was very vague, knowing that there was going to be a special use permit with restrictions attached. I'm sure that's why it was short and just to the point. And then, we have staff, you know, look around, see what we, what other towns are doing, and they did, and they came up with this text, and we're going to, you know, massage it a little bit between this text and what Glenn Chalder did, and hopefully come up with something that maybe fits the town and everybody can be happy. Well, we'll have, we'll continue this public hearing. So, with that said, if there's nobody else that wants to make a comment, then we would ask for a motion to continue the public hearing. And I see Mr. Schobert has his hand up.
Yeah, one of the things that I wanted to mention is, it does seem to be a foregone conclusion around town that, A, this text amendment, A, text amendment allowing this is going to be approved, and B, that there's going to be a winery on Mountain Road, because B follows A. And that's disheartening for those of us who live here and have watched a lot of things flounder in town. I mean, this seems to have the green light, and it's, it has to be extremely upsetting for those neighbors who live right there. See, I can avoid the drunks. I can go down Stafford Road, but anyone who's going to have a winery blocked in their backyard, whether it's on Mountain Road or anywhere else, you know, has to be thinking, this is coming. It's going to be approved. There'll be conditions of some sort with a special use permit, but that's not what people want to hear. I mean, it just sounds like it's a done deal. Thank you.
Like I said, this is Jill Conklin. This was something that was talked about... This was something that was talked about a couple of years ago. Farm the table, wineries, just something that's happening across the state. There's wine trails, there's, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't any particular property in mind when we discussed this. And still today, we are just talking about a text amendment. We're not talking about an application. We are not tonight. We are talking about a text amendment. I have to step away for one second. I can hear you, but I just need to step away.
Okay. George had his, George had his hand up first and then Karen Murdock.
No, I'll defer, I'll defer.
Okay. Go ahead, Karen.
Karen Murdock for the record. I just wanted to say that, you know, Summers has an agricultural background. I hate to see all the farms in town being turned into, you know, mini neighborhoods and, you know, more houses, more children in the school system, more roads that have to be plowed by the town. Let's keep the agricultural spaces in town agricultural. Let's provide an opportunity for farmers to have other uses of their farm properties so that they can make a living. Everybody knows, everybody wants to live next to a farm, but nobody knows how hard it is to be a farmer, how hard it is to make a living off of just growing, you know, fruits and vegetables without having accessory uses to the farm. Somebody brought up the RD Winery in Enfield. That is not a farm winery. It's a different, falls under different regulation of the Connecticut liquor licensing. They had to go through a different permitting process because they don't have a farm. We are asking for an amendment for farm wineries. We fully intend to grow the fruit that we're going to be using to make into wine, whether it's grapes or other fruit. And, you know, I just like to see other opportunities to keep the farmland in town so that we don't have more houses or maybe another community college taking up these large parcels of land. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. If there isn't anybody else that has anything to add, then I would ask that we, somebody make a motion to continue the public hearing and I think we would continue this.
Jill, I think George was waiting to speak.
Are you waiting to speak, George?
No, I'm good, thank you. I'm also. I would make a motion to continue the public hearing, but I don't know too when.
Yeah.
Because we really do, we really do need to get together. As I was speaking to Jennifer earlier tonight, which I will put into the record of the meeting now, I told her that I think that it's very important that we figure out a way for the Commission to have a working meeting on this. I think that we could probably do it within the confines of everything that's going on as long as we do it on YouTube and have an open discussion. But we really need to get through this because I can say I wouldn't pass what was proposed either way. I think we need something between it and we need to decide based on the input that we took tonight especially, how that might change the way we look at the final thing.
I agree. This is Jill Conklin. I agree with that, Carl. Do we, do we want to, we have to, if we, when we continue this public hearing, we have to put a date on it?
Well, Carl Walton, again, I think legally we can get by with assigning it to a new date and possibly changing that date at a reasonable time before that, because, I mean, we had already scheduled a public hearing, we had to cancel, type of thing. And, I mean, it would be totally different if we could actually have physical meetings where we could sit down at a table and hash this out and then do it, but we're not allowed to.
But I, this is Jill Conklin. Carl, I do agree that our next meeting should be just the committee and talk about what we, you know, discuss a possible addition, subtraction of this or merging, finding the right text amendment.
Yeah, Carl Walton, again, I think we all have things that we envision in a regulation like this and, you know, it's not like I can't pick up the phone and call the rest of you because that would be an illegal meeting. So we've got to do it in the public eye and the only way we can do that is to figure out a way to have a working meeting, I mean, a real working meeting. Maybe we could do it even, maybe we could even do it Zoom-wise, but we've got to have that at some point before we can go much further.
This is Member Lucas Cherry. Just on a professional level, we, I have to do this every day with the company I work for, but, you know, be it Skype or Microsoft, there's so many options, I just can't even, there's just so many. But I'm sure we could come up with a fairly easy plan for all of us to have a working committee as, remember, as Carl Walton had stated. And, you know, I'm open to whatever, be it Skype or Zoom or, you know, open to pick the other ideas also.
Thank you, Lucas. Are we looking at a date of like June 1st, possibly not, maybe in July? We could have our meeting, the committee, June 1st? Is that our next scheduled?
Your next regular meeting is June 1st, yes, in two weeks from tonight.
Right.
We already have, Carl Walton, again, we already do have agenda items for that meeting though, I believe.
Right, but it's a regular meeting, so the Commission could bring their thoughts to that meeting and you could discuss it.
Right.
You know, take the time in the next two weeks to mark it up however you want.
This is Jill Conklin. Jennifer, do you know what's on our June 1st meeting? I don't think it's a public hearing of any sort.
It is. It's the public hearing for Union Agricultural and for Pleasant View.
I mean, I think we could have our discussion after that.
Carl Walton, again, I would agree. I mean, it would be ideal if we could have a discussion about the regulation after that, yes. I don't think we'll be ready to continue the public hearing.
No, I'm, I'm.
No, Jill Conklin, correct. I did, I thought we would set a date either later in June or into July for the public hearing to be continued.
So this is Paige Rassid, member speaking. June 1st, it'd be good for us to discuss the path forward on this, but I might even envision another meeting after that where we get information from experts and request other materials as part of that discussion. But again, June 1st, maybe there's enough time to at least chart a path forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, this is Jill Conklin. I think June 1st, we're going to put on our agenda to discuss the text amendment as a committee and then we will, we will continue this public hearing and we need to set a date tonight, then.
Carl Walton, again, I would, I would say, what if we set June 15th, just, or whatever? I'm not looking at a calendar.
June 15th is a Monday.
Okay. What if we said, what if we said June 15th as a date to continue this meeting at?
I don't think that's going to work because June 15th, we have Hillsdale College public hearing.
Well, they forgot.
We don't have a public hearing anymore.
Or discussion.
We have further discussion with the attorneys. Okay, so that's a bad day.
Yeah.
I wasn't, you're looking at something written down, I wasn't.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we could make it the 22nd, the Monday after, or we could go to our next scheduled meeting, which would be July 6th.
No, I think we need to take it up sooner than that.
Okay.
Again, I think maybe the following week if we could do it.
The 22nd, June 22nd?
Sure, sounds good to me from right now.
Okay.
So Carl made a motion to continue the public hearing to June 22nd?
I did.
Lucas Cherry.
And Carl made a motion, Lucas seconded, to continue the public hearing to June 22nd at 6:00 PM. If willing, we would be in person, but I have a feeling we might be on another telecommunication. So all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 And I.
No opposition? No opposition?
None. I would also like, Carl Walton, again, for the record, I would also like to interject that I have asked Jennifer to look and find out if there is any way for us to have face-to-face meetings.
Yeah.
So if we can, we will.
And I've actually talked to Jennifer about that too. I mean, our conference room for our, the committee members, it's so big, we could spread out and have a face-to-face meeting.
This is Member Lucas. I'll let you know, I'm not showing up.
Yeah, and.
I have a child.
Paige.
It's not, I just won't be able to.
Look, Carl Walton, again, for the record, Lucas, it's, it wouldn't be a problem if you wanted to do it by Zoom, we could certainly accommodate you. We don't want to exclude you.
Are we even saying the same thing, Paige?
More or less.
Yeah. I mean, I guess it would be optional if we wanted to meet a few of us in person and the rest via Zoom.
You know, it might be important in future public notices to let people know in order to participate fully in the public meeting, you have to join by a certain method as opposed to using the phone number.
Yeah, good point.
It's a, Carl Walton, again, for the record, it's an evolution.
Certainly. So with the public hearing continued, next on our agenda was old business discussion.
No, it's not on the agenda.
It isn't?
No, the revised agenda.
Well, I don't have the old one, okay.
Just adjournment, that's it.
I make a motion to adjourn, Carl Walton, for the record.
Paige Rassid, second?
I think Paige seconded that motion. Correct?
Correct.
Carl made a motion to adjourn, Paige seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At 7:54, adjourned. On.
Great echo there, Lucas.
We got your thumbs up at least.
Right.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.